You know, if you wanna fix signage or something like that, but it probably does need to be noted, you know, something clear and official, so to say. I'm not sure, what I'm, I, someone asked me the other day, I don't even know what the penalty, is it a towing penalty, is it a ticket? I'm not sure what happens in the town.
I guess it's not really anything specific, it's just, sometimes they get towed.
Right, right. So again, if, if on us, on an inside sign, whatever you wanna, I hate to use the word threaten, but in, a, a, whatever, the penalty or, or subject to towing, subject to ticketing, subject to, to penalty, however you want us to word that, we're happy to word it and also give the verbal reinforcement as well. Um, we aren't gonna run the bus, the bus didn't, didn't work very well, it's just, um, the number one complaint, it's just too dark in this town. People don't wanna wait for a bus in the dark. There's not enough streetlights, there's not enough, they don't feel safe. So, um, so the, we're not gonna run the bus. Um, and we talked a little bit about the plowing. Um, in terms of the showmaking, again, we're gonna use the exact same system as we used last year. Would like to, to get that out in November if, if weather permits. The plan right now would be to make it, um, again, one time, heavy and hard, before we move the entire system over to the Nordic area. Um, but if we can't make the Thanksgiving deadline, again, we'll just push that out to, uh, December nineteenth, uh, tentative open date. But again, all subject to weather. And then as far as the hillwork and restoration, um, we're gonna do a little more, um, clearing of the debris, uh, right now. Um, there's sticks and rocks and things like that out there, um, from the clearing that we did last year, that kinda got frozen into the ground. We're gonna pull, just hand pull a lot of that out, just to really smooth it down. Uh, we seeded a couple different times this year, um, but because it's a hillside, we kept getting a lot of the, the seed would run off. It's taken pretty well at this point, but if you look up there, you can see a decent amount of brown spots. So, we'll bring in the hydrocedars, um, as soon as we can, uh, next year, um, in hydroseed. We've, we've wanted to, the, ultimately, the plan is to do some sort of wildflower seed, I believe. Um, but for certain reasons, working with Bill Cantlin, it, uh, either it was gonna, I think they, they established you need a, a better ground, a, a real ground cover before the wildflower seed will take. It won't, it, it has a harder time taking into straight soil, as opposed to, you know, get grass on it, provide that erosion stabilization, and then come back either next year or the year after with a wildflower seed. So that, we could put that down as early as next year, depending on what kind of early season growth we get. But that's basically it, I mean, it's, it's really, it's pretty straight, pretty straightforward, very similar to last year, um.
Did you have the success, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Did you have the success that you thought you would with it last year?
Yes, yes. Um, I think, uh, we, we had to, uh, there were certain, we found that certain hours and certain weeks, all of a sudden, we thought we'd get a big crowd in, and they wouldn't show up. And there were certain hours when we thought, oh, it's gonna be a light day, and we were just jam-packed sold out. Um, so I think it was just a, a, probably with us, we, uh, we had to, kinda, early season, we probably overspent a little bit in terms of our labor. We, we can be a lot more efficient with it, but in terms of the actual revenue, it was, it was right on target, so it was good.
Uh, on the snowmaking, um, the same number of fan guns, or you were going to, cause you talked about trying to make a lot quick. Are you gonna increase the number of guns?
No, no, just one gun. Yeah, one gun and, uh, and just keep it cranking. We brought, so we made snow once last year when we realized we had to. When we realized natural snow just doesn't cut it. Uh, we brought that one gun out, it worked pretty well. Um, after we got the two and a half inches of rain in early January, we, we set up again, if you remember, to make it, to make the snow again, because it was getting really thin, real thin. Um, uh, we've run the gun with a generator and we didn't, our guys weren't quite on the generator as well as we could, and generator is what they call dirty power, it's very, it fluctuates quite a bit. And, um, I think it fluctuated a little bit, it, it went out, within about, it was that, so that was really cold days, within about twenty minutes, the lines froze and everything went. So we actually never truly went back and made more snow. Luckily, we got some natural snowfall filled in and the rest of the season was fine. So again, it was more just lessons learned, but I think one, that, that one yellow fan gun, which, again, you really, you really can't hear too much.
No, I'm just concerned if that, that, you know, I think the draw on coming, cause you're using town water out of the fire height, right?
That's right.
I just don't wanna increase the draw.
No, yeah, exactly. Yeah, and, and again, obviously, we'll be cognizant of making sure we don't do it on holiday times or, or weekends.
Yeah, will you be making the same amount of snow by the arena again?
Hopefully not, it was a little too much.
Well, right, and the combination of the two is what stressed us out, especially during the holiday period.
So, that was another consideration in terms of trying to do it in November, you know, cause it's such a, for lack of a term, dead time. Um, so I think there was, I think we tried to make snow, like, right before one of the holiday weeks, and that was, that was a little much, I think. So, right, so I think just because, um, because we're getting a little bit of a, of a, of a head start, we'll try to be a lot more cognizant, both on, on the Nordic side and, and, uh, and the tubing side as well. Yeah, we made, if you remember, we had that very bizarre snow structure, behemoth, so, because it was so cold and we made it, and that gun is so good, it just made it so fast, which is a good thing, but it was problematic.
Do you think making that, trying to get it going for, um, Thanksgiving weekend, uh, that early in the season, that what you make is gonna hold?
It's, it's a risk.
So you don't have to?
Yeah, it, it, it's definitely a risk. It may not, I mean, we could get, we could get rain, to be sure, in, in December, and we would have to go out to touch it up again. Um, but, um, yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's a real, I guess, if you guys didn't want us to, I, we could, we could hold off, but, uh, you know, we get such huge, every, the past, I mean, at least since, since I've really, uh, been here full-time, the, the crowds just get bigger and bigger every Thanksgiving, there's no doubt about it, which is great. I think it's fantastic that people are seeing this.
Yeah, it's best to have an alternative venue for when things are really packed everywhere.
Right.
Well, it's better from the town's perspective to make it during the slow periods, so if, if we can, then if the weather cooperates, I would.
You know, with the whole BBTS project we have going, we definitely have a make it early mindset, to be sure. Um, and what we found with those guns is, they're really great, you know, and you can make it fast. You don't need as many hours and the whole thing, so, again, it's all weather-dependent, so if we can, if we can make it hard and heavy.
Were there any issues after hours with people utilizing the hill?
You know what, they, they, I hate, I don't wanna say this too publicly and get people, eh, they really weren't.
Okay.
They really weren't. You know, we would rope off that hill every night with a fencing.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we had any issues, frankly, so.
When the, when the facility's open and you're, um, running people up and down that hill, is there always a superintendent, um, there at the site? I know there's a, there are quite a few young people that are running the operations. Is there usually a superintendent there? Because that true mobile is kind of a situation where it gets a little fundry sometimes.
Sure, um, so, yeah, so we have, um, there's a tubing manager, which we are actually interviewing for a new one this year. Um, our guy got a full-time job, he was great last year. Um, the, the tubing, um, operations manager typically works inside, um, or this is the way it worked last year. And then we have a hillside manager, which is usually one of the, most of the hillside, uh, employees were, um, snow sports staff last year that came over after. And, and there was always a supervisor out there as well. That supervisor is usually the guy on the machine. We try to put the most adult person on, on the machine, um.
Saw some weird, crazy tracks out there last year, just kinda wondering.
Uh, boy, maybe. Uh, I'm, I, to be honest, I, I think it worked pretty well. I, I, I really don't like that. I'm not gon- gonna be very honest. I hate the fact that we run that, that snow machine. Um, we contemplated the idea of putting a, a, our old pony lift in, uh, this year. Um, for various reasons, it was just too big of a project and, uh, we, we thought, just even after the first year, we'd be rocking the boat a little too much, because, you know, we'd have to really consider the aesthetics of it and all that kinda stuff. It's, it's an easy lift to throw up, but again, when you think about how, how it's gonna be ma- maintained in the summer, do we take it down? Um, Keith Sutherland was leaving. It was a whole, it was, we had a lot of stuff going on operationally, and we said, you know what, we can probably wait one more year. We got very few complaints. I thought we'd get tons of complaints about the fact that we asked people to walk. But because the price was quite reasonable compared to other tubing hills, and kid, there are very few people complained. Um, a- after about forty-five minutes to an hour, the kids got exhausted and the parents were happy. And they said, great, my kid is exhausted, we're gonna go home and go to bed. So, um, it, it, it was, it was really great. And the only, um, injury or anything like that, I think we had one person slip on the ice at the base, um, of, of the tubing hill, so, um, I thought we'd have, you know, there was always the risk that it was gonna be more injury prone or something. We had tubes that ran very far last year. We're gonna, um, one thing I did not include in here, uh, because we're not a hundred percent sure, but we're gonna try to put a little bit of an uplift at the bottom, and you put in some carpets, they're just carpets that roll out. Uh, they're, they're kinda just for friction, that kinda slows, slows them down. And those mats would just be brought in, um, when it's running and then rolled up and taken out at the end of each night.
Are you gonna be addressing how the, the, the cross-country ski trail used to cross right down to the base of that hill? And, um, we skated a couple times this past year, it looked confusing as to where it goes. If you go out of, uh, try to carry it, you don't really, really know where to go.
Right. So we temp, yeah, obviously, we temporarily moved it. I believe we're going to keep where it was last year. Will be its kinda new home. I think we decided that that actually worked pretty well. But to your point, which is a very good one, we probably just need to sign that better. I think we're hesitant signing it, cause we weren't completely sure if it was gonna be permanent. Uh, but I'm, I, I, I can go back and talk to Leah, but I'm not.
Cause there were some, some people were skiing right across the, the base of the hill, and, you know, kids were coming down the hill, so it was.
While they were tubing?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Well, I mean, we don't groom it there, you know, so I mean, if, I guess if people do that.
The tubes do.
Was that?
The tubes do.
Oh, the, the tubes do, sure. But, you know, in terms of the actual, uh, the, the classic tracks or anything like that, obviously, we, we kept that, um, to the side. It seemed to work okay. It, it's not as good. I don't, I'm a cross-country guy too, so I, I don't personally like it as much, but, um, but it, it's probably the best of, in terms of married.
Yeah, you do have the capability of going right across the golf course and getting back onto the, the trail that's along the road there. Just have to double back.
You'd have to double back, that's right, yeah, yeah, so we could do that.
But at least it would be a trail.
Um.
Okay.
Any questions or anything? I mean, everything, okay, great. Well, again, you guys know where to find us if you think of something and it's working or not working, and they'll just, just let us know.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next thing is the, um, site plan application, the WBBTS, the rail locks and trampoline venues. They, um, have submitted their application with the, uh, additional information that we had requested. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to see it. It's here. Um, I've looked it over, in my opinion. Um, they've answered our questions and the information that would be required of, uh, application is there. And it's up here if anybody wants to take a look at it.
Yeah, but you have gone down, and, uh, and like, just some clarification, is it a, did they submit a full application or is it kinda modified based on the?
They had submitted a full application, we had gotten back to them with some things that were, I think the last meeting or the meeting before that.
That we did not need, uh, or?
There were ser- uh, several issues that had to be addressed, and we felt we could not accept the application.
Right, I remember that, yeah, there was some shortage of some items.
That's correct, and they have, since that time, submitted those things that we had requested.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm not sure if Ray has reviewed it or not. Did Ray get a chance to review it, do you know, Mike?
No, he did not.
Okay. Um, but I, I feel that the application is complete and, uh, would move that it be?
Well, I'll, in the interest, I will make a motion to, uh, accept the application as complete.
We have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Alright, opposed? Okay, so we have the completed application accepted, so we will open up the, um, public hearing at this point. Um, and if, uh, anybody's here from the BBTS who wants to make a presentation, please do.
Uh, good morning, members of board. Uh, my name's Brian D'Anderson, uh, with the Civil Engineering Consulting Department of Vanessa in Brussels, out of Bedford. Um, Peter Stoklowsa from the Waterville Academy should be here shortly, uh, to drop his, uh, job off. So, I apologize, um, that he's not here for the moment, but if you'd like, I can get started and try to keep it brief, cause he's a simple one. I'll just pass out a couple photos here. We have, uh, of the box and rail line. Probably most of you are, I don't have enough for everyone, so I'll just.
No, sure.
Apologize for that. Um, I think most of you are aware, it's a facility that, that was built, and, um, now we're trying to do, kind of, after the fact, come in and, uh, build the site plan and verbal process for that. Um, up here is a, kind of, a overview of the campus. Um, this is the new training center that was recently built. Uh, in Boulder Path Road along, uh, the bottom of the page, north is, is this way. Um, this is their existing, in the light yellow here, ramp, um, and tr- um, balloon system here. Look, the, uh, box and rail line is a, is a training facility. It's basically a wood structure, uh, with plywood on it and then some carpeting on it, um, to protect the equipment. Um, that's in the, uh, kinda more vibrant yellow, uh, here. On, uh, the yellow area here is the wood-framed area. There's a small platform up along, uh, the hill, and then this outline here is kinda the limits of the, uh, outdoor carpeting. Um, the other thing that they are proposing to, uh, to build is, previously they had some trampoline decking in this location that they removed, and now they're likely to put, uh, in-ground trampoline pits, um, within this, this yellow location here. The, the pits are about eleven feet by seventeen, uh, is the size of the trampolines, and about four feet deep. Um, the reason we kind of have it showed as a sort of an area here is, once their contractor goes to construct the pits, um, if they encounter a, a large rock or something that is difficult, it gives them a little bit of flexibility to move these things around to best fit the terrain. Uh, this area is, is, is pretty much flat here off to the, uh, the right of this, the existing, uh, the chairlift building. And, um, also along here, um, my understanding from talks with the towns, this is considered a, um, kind of a, uh, auxiliary use, um, secondary use, not a primary use, so there's a six-foot setback. I know there was some discussion at the previous meeting, I wasn't here, but my understanding is there's some discussion as whether or not, um, this box and rail line is actually in the setback or not. Um, it's, it's not within the six-foot setback. Um, and we have gone out there and surveyed located that, so previously, we sort of, um, looked at some photos and took some taped measurements and, I, you know, kind of roughed it in. What's shown on this plan is actually a surveyed location of the, of the setup, so we did confirm it's not within the setback. Um, as far as, uh, facilities and new services of, you know, electric, water, there's no new services required for either of these facilities. Um, and, uh, the one thing that did come up a little last time is there's a public water line that crosses the site through here that the box and rail setup is located over. Uh, it's my understanding that the town has, the, the Waterville Academy has worked with the town, and there is a letter in your packet that, that states that this is acceptable for the town, um, at this time. And, um, I can certainly go through any of the other, um, ins and outs of this, this box and rail setup. There is a, uh, profile, um, towards the back of the plan set, that kinda shows a, uh, cross-section of that coming down through. At its highest point above the ground, it's about six and a half feet. Uh, there is a six-foot, uh, varying height, a six-foot maximum wall on the side, um, to keep people off the edge. And then there are some various, um, boxes and rails that can be moved around, um, as they're coming up their different training drills. Pretty much, uh, that's pretty much what the proposal is at the moment, and, uh, trying to keep it pretty well.
The, uh, trampoline pit, you know, and this instead of being above is going to be below ground. Is trampoline an all-year-round thing or just during the summer months or?
I'm gonna assume it's.
Yeah, I would, it's gonna be all, all year round. I mean, as long as we.
Well, so the trampoline will stay in place even when it snows?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the intended use of it during the winter, we'll have to see if there's four feet of snow up there, we probably won't be using it. But if it's a light snow year, we'd probably be using the outdoor tramps.
Okay.
Um, cause, uh, right now, the, we have those two tramps that are outside, they're in the training center. So, we, you know, we need more going forward, and, um, these would serve as another venue for athletes to do some training on.
Yeah, I don't know, but in the application, is there a picture of what that pit would look like and whatever fencing would surround it or?
Not that I've seen it, uh, through, uh, due to the section.
Uh, there is a, uh, there's a detail, there's a detail on sheet C three, kind of a section of what the pit is. It's basically a four-foot hole in the ground lined with pressure-treated plywood to kinda keep the sides up. Um, and then the frame would sit in there, and there would be some sort of, um, ring around it to make sure there's not a gap between the ground and, uh, the edge of the, the trampoline pit.
Yeah, is there a fence around it?
We haven't decided how, um, we would protect it as far as, um, keeping people off it. I do, there would be a security feature as far as, and one of the ideas that we're talking about is maybe laying, um, like, two pieces of plywood that would join and be locked, so we couldn't have just kids from around just jumping up and down. So it would be a secured site that way. Um, whether there's a, you know, split rail fence around it, there surely won't be that blue pop-up fence. I know, we gotta make, make sure that there's gonna be an appropriate, but the exact fence that we have around it is not, we haven't talked about yet. And one of the concerns there is if you put a structure up and you're bouncing and you, you could hit the fence. So, we're pretty sensitive, what, me, we might not want anything on it except a sign saying this is, you know, you know, property of a BBTS. Um, please, you know, please don't use or no trespassing. Um, and then making sure when it's not in use, it's not accessible at some level. And I think that's where we're gonna go with it, because I'd rather not look at a fence, I'd rather, the, the, the idea with this is it, it makes the property look clean and open, um, even though those tramp pits are there, um, in converse to what was there in the past with the tramp deck and that whole, that whole apparatus.
Yeah, I, I have no bias towards a fence, but I think your statement, and I think I'd be interested in understanding what it is that you're going to do to secure it during times when you're not using it, cause it would strike me as it's gotta be a public nuisance. I mean, the kids are gonna wanna try to come and jump on it if they think they can get away with it. I mean, you know, um, and what you're saying right now is you haven't figured that out yet, how you're gonna do that.
Well, it will be shut down when we're not using it, or when BBTS athletes or camp programs not using it. Um, the exact way we're gonna shut it down, um, I don't think we were able to present that yet, cause we were tossing through a few ideas. Um, but it will not be, um, some, and some from the public can go just start jumping on it and, you know, cause that opens up for liability, so.
Do you have any idea when you would decide which way to secure?
Well, we're looking into the different ways that these things exist out there. I mean, I know there's a site in actually where we go in Europe, where they have an outdoor tramp and it's flushed to the ground, and there's no security in that thing, there's, everyone's always bouncing up and down. And so what we're trying to do is find out what are ways to do that without putting up a fence, cause a fence, they can just hop over the fence, right? So you need to make sure that they can't jump up and down on the, on the tramp. Another way was, these are tramps that are like they are in the training center, we could fold a tramp up and lock it. Um, the, one of the concern in that is that someone could fall into the hole. So, again, I, I think we understand this is an issue and we, we're gonna address it. Um, at this time, we wanted to put the tramp pits on this whole plan, cause we don't wanna come back and do this whole site plan thing again for the tramps. Um, but we don't have all the answers about how we're gonna protect the, the venue.
With the, with the, you're, but you're applying for approval for both the trampolines and the box rail set, or just for the box rail set, the box rail venue at this stage?
We're, we're trying to get it all done in this submission. The tramp pits will not be built till next summer, I would say. So, again, we're not be, we're not gonna, if you guys approve this project, it's not like I'm gonna put a, um, a thing in the ground right now. Uh, we're gonna wait till next summer. Um, it, I didn't have the answers when we met two months ago. This is the way we'd like to go forward with the tramps. I know that was a topic of conversation, what are you doing with the tramps? So this is what we're doing. We're gonna create tramp pits, we're gonna put them in there. Um, we tried to get some details on the pits, which I think is appropriate for this process. How we're gonna secure them is a, is another detail, and the planning board would like to have that as a contingency, we can talk about that. But it is part of the plan. I don't know that exact security on that, how we're gonna do it. Like I said, the, it's, there's some ideas of, of taking plywood and locking it. So that would be one, one idea of how to do it.
Okay.
So someone could walk over it, but they can't jump up and down on it.
Does the rainwater or snow now, um, dissipate in the pit? Or is there ever a chance that there's gonna be a couple or three feet of water in there?
I'll let Brian answer that, but it's gonna be porous, porous materials at the bottom of the pit. So, and it's gonna be engineered where it could drain through, and, and after looking at some of the testing data that these guys did in the property, I believe it, we, we don't have any issues with the draining, but it will be something that we're addressed when it's designed, I mean, when it's built.
I've talked with their contractor who built the training center, um, who's also done a number of these pits in, in different places. Um, based on what they found digging the foundation and stuff of the training center, um, and some of the other soils on site, we're not anticipating that there's gonna be a drainage issue here, and they're.
I mean, my concern would be more of a safety issue if somehow, um, a child got stuck or fell in or whatever, and now you've got two feet of standing water in there and something unfortunately happened.
At, at this point, um, we're anticipating that the soils are gonna be able to drain. Uh, if construction and they're not, then we have to put another drain system or something in there. Uh, just, you know, bale it out here or, or here, um, where we could, just to make sure that water does not accumulate in there.
Okay, at this point, um, anybody in the public wants to speak in favor of the project? Anybody else think against it?
I have a neutral comment. I just would like it to be on the record about the letter that the town issued on the easement. Um, we are, this structure, the way that it is, is over an existing water line easement for the public water supply. And if something happens to the public water supply, we'll pre, make the appropriate repairs. We may impact the, the jump, um, but it's agreed with, uh, BBTS that we will be responsible, the town would be responsible for the, everything below the jump. The jump itself, to restore it, will be responsibility of BBTS. Now, we'll try to make the repairs outside of, you know, so that we don't impact it, but it's the same setup as the jump hill.
Okay, that, that's a little more explicit than, than the letter.
Mm-hmm. And that's why I just wanted to be on the record exactly what Peter and I spoke about when I.
Okay, so repairs to the water line would be accomplished by the town, paid for by the BBTS, is that reasonable?
No, they're, BBTS is responsible for putting the hill back. The town does not have to pay to put the hill itself back. We just make the repair to the water line and put that ground back to grade, and then they put, they're responsible for making any repairs to the hill itself, right?
Yeah, that's fair, yeah, yeah, that's my understanding.
And I, I, that is what I believe the easement itself, the written easement says, but I just wanted to make it clear so people don't have to look it up.
I, I think the further the conversation, we did talk if there was, um, need to go and repair underneath these, these things that we're building, these venues, that we would try to find a different, um, line and, and look at trying to put the water line so it's not underneath some of these, these structures and these, uh, venues, so.
Well, that's always your right as the easement holder, grantor.
Right.
You can always divert the line, you know, to a different, give us a different easement. That, that's acceptable to the town also, as long as it doesn't interrupt the town water supply.
It would be my understanding, uh, these two, not, I guess more than the trampoline is the rail locks. It's right out there in plain view and it's kind of a, um, edgy type thing. I'm assuming that that will be kept in good repair and maintained on a regular basis, so that if, um, it doesn't become something dangerous or nice or something like that. Would that be your understanding?
And that is my commitment, and if there's, um, comments from residents going to the town, I'd like to, like to hear them, so we can make sure that any of those concerns are being addressed. Um, being in good repairs is vital, because it's a, a safety issue. Um, always having a safety issue. Like, we got a new bag last year, and, um, that new bag already has, uh, something wrong with it, so probably gonna get another new bag, which, um, we're always addressing the safety issue. So the, keeping it in good repair and maintaining the jump is critical to safety. And then the second part, uh, aesthetically, we do wanna make sure that we're making as pleasing as possible. Um, and welcome any kind of comments of, of, if there's some issues where, you know, this looks lousy, this, you know, can you improve this? We, we address that, so. We're trying to do that as, as best we can, but we need to feel those comments as we come in too, so.
Yep, we'll let you know.
So.
Would you agree to some sort of, uh, contingency that if the selectmen were to determine that it was not well-maintained and kept in good repair, that, and they had asked, would ask you to remove it, that you would remove it?
Oh, I'd like to have, uh, a notice of, of some type of action to put it into the, um, a, a, a shape or, um.
Into good repair.
Into good repair, or, you know, to get it back up to a standard that the selectmen feels appropriate for, for the venue. Uh, you know, so I'd like to have some type of, you know, sixty-day notice or something, uh, before they say, well, this looks lousy, just take it down. So I, I think that's, I'd agree to that.
Was there any issue with the, um, the, the jump that's there right now? Have you had any issues? Have you had any issues with the present jump that's there?
As far as maintenance?
Maintenance and aesthetics?
Well, yeah, we've had, well, we go to the maintenance concern. When we first originally built the jump, it was laying strictly on the ground, the material. And that caused a lot of issues aesthetically and maintenance wise and safety. So we did create that little foundation of plywood underneath it, which actually cleaned it up a little bit, but it also created a smoother surface and protected the surface. So, and we put in, you know, since the project was gone through in 2011, you know, probably we spent thirty to forty thousand dollars trying to maintain and improve the project. You know, I do, and I have heard of concerns, basically when the bag is down, that you can see underneath the jump. And we've talked about how to enclose that area that you can look into that doesn't look as pleasing. I mean, I tried to, you know, painting it red to tie any of the buildings. We've stained the whole thing, trying to keep the grass short. Removed the bottom fence, because I know that was a little bit of an eyesore. I think going in the future, I'd like to do more of like a split rail fence around the whole site. But doing the best we can with all the various projects we have. So I heard concerns, we've tried to address some. There's probably more going forward too. And we, you know, look forward to the opportunity to address them on a case by case basis.
Well, I'm sure because it's a big investment on your part and to draw people in too, to BBTS. And I know for a fact that my kids, my grandkids find it fascinating to go over there and watch the kids. But, you know, I know that you're putting money into it and would, you don't wanna build something to have to keep rebuilding it. So I'm sure you're gonna try to stay on top of it.
It's been a little, from my perspective, it's been a little bit of a boat. As far as, you know, you keep throwing money in it. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's a really fascinating and groundbreaking venue to train athletes safely. I don't know how many jumps we've had on the bag and, you know, we've had a couple minor injuries. And it just makes me feel good that we're doing that for, in their safety as concerned. Aesthetically, you know, we have a building committee at BBTS, it's a subcommittee of the board. And we, it's on our topic list when we talk about like, how do we make this site look aesthetically more pleasing? Because it is the focal point of that property now, and it's the focal point of our campus down there. So it is a big issue for us personally, BBTS. And I know it's an issue with the town, that we wanna make sure it looks nice. And I do think it's a really nice attraction also for the town. Because like you said, I have people lying upside, outside my admin building, watching the kids do the jumping. That's pretty cool. So, or they're going up the lift and they're looking down. And someone recently shared a story with me, a public person, that, that's really cool what they do there. So, you know, with those, those are concerns. I do think we did do some work to the rail box line to try to make that tie into the whole facility. And, you know, trying to make that look a little nicer. And there's some still work I'd say we wanna do to that venue. But would like to hear the concerns if there are going forward. And again, if the selectmen see it going the other way, you know, like, you better fix this or it's gonna come down. You know, I understand that, so.
The rail box line is pretty much, this, what you're, what you're asking is for approval of what's already there, essentially?
Yes, because again, the way we look at this.
So from a landscaping perspective, everything, what's there is what you're proposing it to be?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. Well, it rare that we have a case where you know exactly what they're gonna do.
Yeah, and, you know, that was, that venue was really a temporary venue. So it kind of, how to handle it was, didn't know if we had to go through this whole process. And at the end, you know, we know it's a feature we want, we want it there. And, you know, it's kind of evolved into this, you know, getting it cited.
Have you in the past year had any neighbors or abutters complain about what that rail box looks like?
No.
Thank you.
I don't know if the tennis, maybe from the tennis center, I know that Tom's had.
No complaints. No complaints.
He fully supports it.
Oh, yeah, we do.
He's the closest to it, doing his teaching right there, so. If you have anything to say on that, so.
Yeah, no, we, we could.
Mark, we haven't received no complaints, right?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Further questions or comments? Then I guess I would, do we have to make a motion before we close the public hearing, I believe?
Well, yes, you would have to close the public hearing and then make your motion to approve.
I think the motion is made during the public hearing and then you close the hearing after a second, is it not?
However you wanna, I don't think the steps.
I thought we were not supposed to be giving our opinions until the public hearing closes.
That's right, you're supposed to comment on it, have your discussion.
Right, ask questions, but we're not.
Well, but you can leave the public hearing open. So, because if you close the public hearing, then they can't answer technically your questions. So leave it open.
What's the second, did you close it?
You make, you make your motion, or have your discussion, then make your motion. So now it's the board's turn. You've gotten the public input. Now it's your turn to, if anybody wants to discuss it. It's your debate about the plan.
That's correct, but the public, public hearing's still open?
Yes, the public hearing's still open, so if you ask questions, they can answer.
All right, any discussion at this point?
Well, yeah, I, generally, I think enough information and I understand relative to the rail box line. When it gets to the trampoline pit, I've got the dilemma of, I understand where it's going. I understand the concept of being in the ground. But it seems to me we're gonna struggle with a little bit the issue of it's undefined how it's gonna be protected. And so if we're gonna approve it, and from a location perspective, I'm okay. But then somehow we've gotta get public, you know, it's gotta be subject to, at the point in time it gets constructed, Chris or somebody's gonna have to sign off that he thinks it's adequately guarded. Because I don't know what, I don't know how to deal with it any other way. I hate to do that, but I don't, I don't know what else to do.
That's an issue that came up that, I honestly hadn't thought of that when I looked at the application.
Right.
Having thought of that, it may have been considered not really complete. And I don't think that we should be approving something that is only half defined.
The other question I have is that if, could we approve it contingent upon, because this is not being built till next summer, you said? Is there any way that we could do some sort of contingency that it gets approved subject to the fact that the safety?
You can do that. But that's a pretty wide open. It's not like you're saying contingent upon putting the fence up.
Or for some sort of safety issue.
Well, what we're saying is to operate it, it would be able to effectively, and I wouldn't have to word it, to effectively be able to utilize or operate the trampoline. It would have to be subject to a further review and approval of the feature, of feature, of the guarding features now.
By the board or by the?
Well, I, I think we could decide either Chris, either we're gonna have to give the authority to Chris and he's gonna have to sign off, or whether the board would do it, I don't. I guess I'd be leaning towards Chris, I mean, what do I know about guarding it?
Well, probably we just refer to Chris anyway.
Right, yeah, right. And then so our vote becomes largely, I mean, I guess in the end, if he said he was satisfied that, you know, it's gonna keep, it's not gonna present a public nuisance, that'd be okay with me.
You could set it up like a certificate of occupancy, which you do for commercial buildings. So there's a use permit that has to be issued. So like Bill said, if you're okay with it being in the ground, the way it's being presented, where it's being presented, that's approved. But the actual use of the structure will not happen until Chris has inspected the safety aspect and issued a use permit.
Is this use permit something that's a standard thing?
Well, no, but you could, but you could make it a contingency. There's no real, the way that we control it normally is a certificate of occupancy. So there wouldn't be one, this isn't a building, so.
Yeah, with certificate of use or something?
You could still have a use permit as a contingent approval.
We could make the use of the venue contingent on a review or.
And we'll issue a letter completely acceptable.
It just made more sense where they, we, everything is okay on that plan. And that's the only leading factor that isn't. That would allow them to at least start construction and then they could talk to Chris about the safety approval.
Actually, there's nothing to be built.
Well, they gotta dig a hole.
Well, no, but he said he's not gonna do that till next summer. I presume we would word this in a way that he's not digging a hole until we've signed off on the safety aspects. I wouldn't, I wouldn't give him, I personally don't think I'd give him authority to dig the hole until they came up with a plan that Chris signed off on in terms of how it was gonna be guarded.
Can the use permit be scheduled such that it prevents you from starting to build?
Whatever your contingent approval is, that we'll just work with Peter and when they come up with a plan.
He would have an idea as to what you're gonna be doing.
Yeah, we should have that soon. It's not, you know, we're investigating different ways that, can I talk? I don't know, okay.
Public hearing's still open.
Okay, yeah, we're investigating what's the best thing, so I have no problems with that. And again, I think it's great if you wanna issue a use permit once that's, oh, you're satisfied or Chris is satisfied, if you're empowering him. It's no problem, and I agree with that. I'm sorry I don't have those answers, I just don't have those specific answers at this point. I do wanna get it cited, this is what we're doing, this is where it's going, this is what it looks like. Because we did some detail on the pit itself, but I share your concern and gotta get those answers.
I personally think we're, we're kind of approving a concept here that looks like it could change a little from now till next year. And I think the safety part.
How could it change if it's?
Well, I don't know, I guess.
With regard to the trampoline, you mean?
Yeah, the tramp, yeah.
You need the precise location of that.
And, and the, and the safety part, I understand Chris is gonna, you know, say yay and a, or work with them so that it satisfies, safety issues satisfies the town. I don't know aesthetically if what their plan could come up with and what it would look like. And where do you go from there if Chris is just dealing with the safety part of it? There's like no further review from the planning board.
Are you saying that might end up having a pitch to it, we don't know if it's gonna structure or standards?
Oh, I don't know, the fence around it or.
But are you not, are you not comfortable with Chris being, having the, having the authority to either give it a check, yes, this is a safe?
Well, safety wise, I don't think that there's an issue. I'm just saying, I don't think aesthetics or, or whatever is, and I might be mistaken if that's in Chris's realm of.
So it's the aesthetics, it's not as much the Chris, like we review it as well as Chris, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, kind of, yeah. Well, I, I would be of the mind that conceptually, I'm okay with the notion of it being a pit in the ground. I kind of accept the fact there would be no landscaping. As long as it was secure, that's the requirement they would have to meet. I, I'm not so sure. I mean, I've gone through this with the rail box. I mean, do we want the rail box screened? Well, there's, it's been there for a year, no one's complained, none of the neighbors have complained. I guess I'm to the point where it's not really much of an eyesore. I mean, I haven't heard one single complaint in a year.
Well.
And certainly, certainly you wouldn't wanna put any kind of, any kind of, any kind of trees or bushes around this, around this pit.
No, no, I.
So I imagine they wouldn't put a whole lot around there because that would be a safety issue.
To that point, if there's anything above ground that's gonna be visible, then Chris could come back to you. You know, what, like Peter said, I mean, they, they haven't settled on the exact safety way they're gonna control this. But if, as long as you're okay that if it's flush with the ground or, you know, a couple of inches or whatever, you're fine with that, then he won't come back. But if there's anything that's gonna be visible, they change their mind and they move a fence out twenty feet around it and they settle that that's the best control, then they would come back to you because that changes the aesthetics. Does that address what you're worried about?
Don't think I have a word for that.
Well, I'll give it a shot, all right?
Go slow.
That we, well, no, I'm not proposing a motion, I'm just gonna agree the way to do it. So that we would approve the rail box trampoline venue plan subject to, before construction of the trampoline pit begins, the public safety officer agrees that the design will not be a public nuisance and the planning board certifies that the design is aesthetically pleasing.
That sounds good.
So you'd have to have two steps before you can begin digging the pit.
Sounds good, and you should have an idea by then.
Absolutely.
Don't throw that away.
Sounds like a motion.
So, because he's coming back, right?
That's what this should require him to do.
Okay, good, yep.
Okay.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Well, I want, well, the reason I said don't throw that away is because I think that this approval is going to be contingent on two or three things. And that's going to be one of them.
All right.
The other two things are, just so we have it down, with regard to the continual maintenance of the trampoline and keeping it, and the rail box and keeping it in good repair. And also that if the selectmen at some point determine that it is not being well maintained or kept in good repair, that they will notify the current owner. And the current owner will have sixty days to either remedy the situation or remove the object. I would like that to be contingent, as well, it's been agreed to and I think it's.
Don't you do that in every plan?
No, not necessarily. And I think this is where some of the problems come, because we approve something and then it doesn't really come out the way that everybody remembers the discussion was and the agreements were. But then there's no way of handling it, no way of dealing with it. And I think if the approval is contingent upon the selectmen, you know, it's already laid out here. The selectmen can determine if it's not, they can notify, and then it'll be repaired or removed.
But the selectmen have that responsibility already.
Do they really?
Yes, yeah, they are the, they are the.
Rarely, rarely applied.
I was gonna say.
Well, I mean, there are a couple of cases out there now where it actually has been, and there is a piece of property where we've finally gotten the guy to agree that if he don't paint it, we're gonna start fining them X amount of dollars a day. And I think they've agreed because there is a standard that says it's gotta be maintained to the community standard. And if the selectmen judge that your property is not being maintained to the community standard, we can force you to act.
Well, as the ex officio, then you think it's not necessary to put those, that contingent in?
I, I don't, I, it, certainly the selectmen, it doesn't hurt to put it in there. But other than if, but it's DeMar's point of view, it's just to make the planning board feel comfortable. I mean, I believe they absolutely have the authority now as, as, to, if you're in, if you're, if you've got a building that's in nonconformance, for whatever reason, I mean, nonconformance, that's a bad word. But, you know, is not meeting the community standards, it is clear that the selectmen have the authority and the responsibility to begin fining somebody until it does. Now, to my knowledge, we've only, we've only applied it once.
Well, that's always new. I don't, I'm not adamant about it. I mean, if you feel comfortable with it, then I don't, I won't add it in.
Well, I look at it from a standpoint that BBTS is sinking all this money into this campus. And they're doing so far a great job. And I can't see that they wouldn't continue to be pleasing to the eye because it reflects on them as well as the town about the maintenance for safety issues. They've gotta maintain it for safety issues and whatnot.
That's all well and good as long as the owner remains to BBTS.
Well, correct, correct. But I can't see with this expansion going on, I don't think that's an issue right at the moment.
I think it kind of just makes the, everybody expects BBTS, of course, to maintain it. I mean, they've done a nice job. But it.
But it, uh, it's kind of a statement by the planning board and, we've been in situations before, so maybe just having this language, um, on record.
Alright, so here, I attempted to write that one down. That the rail box and trampoline will be maintained in good repair and the selectmen have the authority to tell the owner to either repair and/or remove the venue with sixty days written notice. Now, as you say, I believe we already have the authority.
Well, I don't have any problem with that.
Well, I would, I.
So, I did, it, 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 from my perspective, it seems like where like there's more scrutiny on our organization to, to write specific language for this, if that already exists. I mean, I don't, it doesn't bother me, 'cause I do think we have a standard and we need to uphold it for our membership and our customers and the town. But, um, if you already have that power and it's being exercised minimally or whatever, I mean, to, to, to say it again explicitly, I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I just think it's, it's a little bit like, oh.
Well, it's a, it's kind of a unique, uh, structure in the valley, that and the jump itself.
It's, it's similar to, it's similar in some ways to the skateboard park.
Right.
The problem with the skateboard park is we, it's never, it's never been approved, it's a permanent thing. But it's always been an issue of trying to keep the thing in a good state of repair.
Right.
So, I don't think it hurts anything.
I don't either.
I don't think we're picking on them.
And not to criticize the way you write, but.
That's a better right, you criticize the way you write.
You gave yourself the authority to tell them, but you didn't really say that it would be removed, that they should remove it, that the current owner should remove it.
Oh, okay.
Rather than say that you have the right to tell them.
To repair or remove.
You wanna, instead of using the word tell, you wanna use direct the owner?
Or the owner, I, I would say that the owner will.
Okay.
Repair or, or remove.
Okay.
You already have the authority to tell them, apparently.
Well, that's right, and, and in the enforcement, any enforcement action will go through the, the same legal process that we go through now. It goes to town council, we prepare letters, we give them, in this case, sixty days' notice. They make the repairs or they don't, then they get another letter that says you haven't done it, and here's what's gonna happen. I mean, we're gonna follow that same process regardless, basically, of what that says, because it's, it's statutory, it's.
I guess my point is, if we're gonna bother to put it in, we ought to state that it will be removed, not just that we have the authority to tell.
Alright, so here, I'm trying again, that the rail box and trampoline will be maintained in good repair and that the selectmen will direct the owner to either repair or remove the venue, given sixty days' notice if not in compliance, right, or something.
We're speaking. I think we're just covering, the board is covering for the board, it's not being directed at BBTS.
No, I understand what you're trying to do, and again, I think it's fair, as long as there's a process of, you know, we'd have legal recourse if you had a select board that isn't the current select board and say, we don't like that, you gotta remove it, and you have sixty days. I mean, that's where, you know, we would, you know, there's a legal process that we fight something like that, so that would be the only, my only concern. It doesn't sound like, it sounds like there's this process that Mark described, which I totally, you know, agree to and adhere to, and, um.
The criteria is in, is in good repair. It, it isn't because the selectmen now determine it's an eyesore. So the only criteria they could use to say it's gotta come out is it's not being maintained in good repair.
And from their liability standpoint, it has to be.
Correct.
And which is the only way we can force somebody to act now. I mean, we can't force someone to do something to a building because we don't think it's aesthetically pleasing. If it's maintained, you know, even if it's ugly.
Well, you just mentioned something about somebody, one piece of property has to be painted.
Well, that's 'cause it's not being maintained in reasonable repair and they have not maintained the landscape. The landscaping is all over the place, so we say it doesn't, it doesn't meet the community standards in that respect. It, it's not a judgment call that we don't like the style of your building. I mean, I, I, I don't think we have any such.
Aesthetically, still, I mean, you're not, you're not gonna put up with a building that doesn't have any paint on it or something.
Right, right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Well, my, my point is that if the planning board approves something, it's with a certain vision in mind that it's approved.
Right.
And if, over the years, it morphs into something that's quite different aesthetically, then I, I think that, like you say, and I'm not saying it would happen, but the, that red wall became the great graffiti wall. It was pretty bad stuff on it, you know?
That's a, that's a good, that's a good point.
And, uh, it, it's still basically the same thing we approve, but it's not what we had approved. And so I would think that the selectmen would have the ability to say, this is, and it's only on the matter of aesthetics that it, it just doesn't meet the requirement, and that's all I'm trying to do. And I, I'm not trying to be specific against the BBTS or anything like that, I just, uh, think that these are too large, well, not, once not too, but you have the jump, which is very large, very, um, visual, and, and this little skate, uh, the box rail, smaller but still quite visual. That, uh, I just wanna make sure that it doesn't become something that we're not approving, you know? And BBTS might change next year, just like the board or selectmen might change next year.
Yeah, we, we have that catch twenty-two in everything we do. I mean, and I don't know what, and I have, I, I've often thought about that, that we approve something, but once the day it's approved, somebody has the right to go stick and paint it and change the color, they can do whatever, and I, there's no approvals required, and I don't believe, Mark, we have any authority to come back and say, you couldn't have painted it.
No, not, not from just the aesthetics. Now, if he, if, if they've said that the hill is gonna be X number of feet high, and they double that.
Right.
Then we have. Then you have some recourse, but you're right, though, at, from just the, if they told you they were gonna paint it red and now they're painting it purple, you can't, if nothing really.
Two years later.
Or, or.
We're stuck.
Or the fence becomes a, a poster board with a sport caricatures or something.
Well. Well, poster board is, we do have a signage authority, so, so there, there are some exceptions to things they couldn't do, but.
There are some exceptions, but like the blue, the blue roof, people didn't like the blue roof when the blue roof was put on the house.
I know.
Up by Cascade Ridge. But we can't do anything about that if they want a blue roof.
It's a, yeah.
It's a blue roof.
It is a democratic society, isn't it?
Yeah, it is their problem, so.
Well, it's, it's a catch twenty-two in all of our regulations. Of which, it's not only just applies, it applies to everything we do, that the day, once you, it, once that, what, generally, once you issue an occupancy permit, you can't unissue it. I don't know of any recourse to take it away from them unless they, unless they have a health issue inside the building, I mean.
A safety issue.
Yeah. It's, uh, it, it's a, but I think that, that's why I'm, I, I say, as long as it's maintained in good repair, would seem to me they've, they've kind of met the requirement, because they could change the landscaping, they could change, you could do a lot of different things. I mean, that happens, it's, the bushes die.
And you feel, you feel with regard to maintenance and good repair, it's already covered in just the current selectmen's opinion?
It doesn't hurt to have it put in here, but, um, but it's gonna get lost, I mean, in all honesty. I mean, how is some selectman five years from now gonna know that there's a clause in here?
Right, unless they look up the minutes, which we've done in the past.
So, so the, there's no, um, how, how do I phrase this? There's no, um, having the language in there at, I mean, if, it, it doesn't give the selectmen, um, more authority, but does it give it a clearer
Well.
understanding of what we're trying to do?
Yeah, it's like, it's, right, I think it's like a signing statement or something that it, it essentially says, well, we're concerned about this issue in this case, and pay attention to it, or the planning board should pay attention to it, but three years from now, it's gonna get lost.
Yeah, but if an issue comes up and then they have to look back.
You might be able to go back.
It's a clearer, yes, it's clearer in the minutes.
I certainly don't think it hurts anything.
Yeah, we have in the past.
In other things, so.
I've gone into Mark's office and dug out the minutes.
And now that we're talking about aesthetics and landscaping plans, Ray did ask me to make sure that there is some statement from the board that you are satisfied with the steps that BBTS has taken on the parking spots, because that was a, kind of a condition that's been discussed a couple of times, that you didn't want to act on this until you were satisfied with what's gone on, so they have done what
We've asked.
my, our understanding, staff's understanding is, that you've asked them to do. So I think you should have something in your motion that says that.
Have, Peter, have you, uh, we, we had a discussion in the parking lot with, I think, a few of us on the, uh, not in the parking lot, but in the four spot area.
Yeah.
For the parking.
Yeah, the four spots that we created on the tennis side, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, was there, um, did you ever do anything with, there was discussion about, uh, numbering the spots or?
Yeah, there's four spots and what I'm gonna do, um.
Identifying it so that people can see, these are the spots, not further in or that sort of thing.
There's posts with signs on it, spot one, spot two, spot three, spot four, and, I mean, the further allocation of those spots is gonna create a permit pass and give two to the tennis center, and then we're gonna have two for now. Obviously, in the winter, they're not using it or need it, so we'll probably use all four spots, so we try to identify four, four spots as a little fence so they can't drive onto the grass.
Okay.
And, um.
As you require.
I, it's, we walked through it one of that day, and we did what we talked about, so I, I hope it's, it's okay. And I think the tennis center is okay with, uh, how, how we're trying to use the property, so.
Through the discussion.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Is it the long one?
I'll read this, I'll give you a copy of this.
Approve the rail box trampoline venue plan, subject two, two conditions. One, before construction of the trampoline pit begins, the public safety officer agrees that the design will not be a public nuisance and the planning board certifies that the design is aesthetically pleasing. Second condition, that the rail box and trampoline will be maintained in good repair, and the selectmen will direct the owner to either repair or remove the venue with sixty days' written notice if not in compliance.
I'd like to further, or I'd like to amend that before we get into a second, to put reference to what Mark was talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, you know, let's think about that. I don't know how to word such a thing.
I don't think it's part of.
What they're saying is they did what they said they were supposed to do on the last thing.
I don't think it's part of the motion as much as it is a, a.
An acknowledgement that we're, that we are satisfied now that the parking
And landscaping.
Is, right, that we're not gonna raise this again.
We've gotta mention this, that specific area of parking, 'cause we're not dealing with the parking lot.
Right. Well, what are we trying to say?
Well, I just say, we acknowledge, acknowledging that the BBTS has met the
Okay.
the planning board's criteria for landscaping.
So it wouldn't be a condition, and then we'll go on, it's just, we acknowledge.
Just acknowledgement, then, then go on to your motion after that.
Then you could say on the tennis side, to even.
No, I think I'd put it down, uh, down the bottom, but we acknowledge that the, um, BBTS has met all requirements for landscaping and parking signage, right?
At least all obligations.
Um, okay, it's met all obligations. For parking signage uh, on, what was the name of that project?
It was, it was part of the training.
Part of training.
On the, well, actually, it goes back to the original education building, right?
Right, right.
Right. That's what's going on.
On the education building project. So I would just put it at the end, that we approve the rail box subject to these conditions, and then just as my final statement, we acknowledge that the BBTS has met all obligations for landscaping and parking signage on the educational, the education building project.
I'm done with that.
Okay?
Yeah.
So that's the motion.
Do we second it?
Uh, we have to close. I think we get a seconded before closing, maybe.
I second it.
Alright, uh, the motion has been made and seconded, we'll close the public hearing. And then, any discussion on the motion? We can discuss the motion as they.
Absolutely.
I'm not gonna touch it, I can't. No discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is passed.
Share.
And the, just to make sure it's clear, the application and the, the, did you say the application's approved or the, um, the application?
Your vote was to approve, you, you accepted the application as.
I'm gonna make sure it's written, right, yeah.
And then the application, uh.
We approved, we approved the project.
Was approved.
So the project's approved.
The application is approved.
If, the project's approved. You are set.
And Bill, you'll, you'll get together with whoever's gonna.
I, I wrote it down, I just gave her a copy and hopefully I'm getting my handwriting and.
Thank you.
I can read that.
Okay.
So, if not, you think Chris has approved.
Not, we'll review it and get together, no?
Aesthetically okay.
Good job, Bill.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Okay, we get to whole business, reviewing the zoning regulations, dash signs.
Well, you know, I thought that, I read the minutes from the last meeting, and I thought that the, uh, the, uh, we did a very good job at identifying, based on the ZBA, some of the things that we need to clarify as we go forward. And it gets into this question, what is an intersection? Uh, what, you know, what's a major, but there were four of them they had, and I think they kind of, um, cover in, in trying to go back on those regulations and clean them up, what we need to do, to make it clear. There were a few other items, I think, as well, that we cleared up. It's interesting, we came up with, and it's the, the mountain asked to change the sign coming off of Triple I Road, you know, the, the multi-town sign that sits there with all the wrong names on it, right? So, and so they wanna actually, the proposal was, they proposed and said, look, we'll get rid of all the names of all the businesses, we just wanna put in there a town with general directions, you know? Town square this way, you know, ice skating, restaurants, other things to have fun, blah, 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 right? Which the selectmen looked at and said, that's a distinct improvement over what they got, because what they have is ridiculous. But, um, now comes the catch twenty-two, so now you get to, well, what kind of a sign is that? Is that an on-premise or an off-premise sign? It's not on a town right away, it's on Forest Service land, so I, you know, so I think, I, I don't know, I don't know if it's on-premise or off-premise for them. Um, you know, and it's not in an intersection. You know, so I don't know what to do with it, you know, so that's where, right, and some of these rules get a little complicated. I mean, it's not at the intersection of Triple I Road and Route forty-nine, and there's already a sign there. So, but, um, to make a long story short, the Forest Service turned it down, I, which we have no reason, we don't know why, but the Forest Service will let it change.
Forest Service will.
Well, it's their sign, it's their property. Then you give it a reason, they just said, no, can't change the sign.
But there's a, but I think that's the discussion that we had last night on the on-premise, off-premise. If it's on Forest Service land, it could be considered
On-premise.
On-premise, because they have a special use permit in the forest. On-premise, because they have a special use permit in the forest. However, the Forest Service won't let them put it up if it's Forest Service land, if it is New Hampshire DOT right-of-way, which is what we thought it was the last time we, when we put up this original sign, but then you have the issue of it being an off-premise sign by our zoning ordinance, because it's not on Forest Service land. It's not on land that the ski area owns, so that's the catch twenty-two that Bill's referring to. But right now, the sign is dead, the existing sign has to come down and will not be replaced.
But isn't that a very specific and, and very different situation that the selectmen could just handle as, as a unique situation? It's so different than anything else that.
Well, no, it's not at an intersection, I mean, everything that Bill just said.
No, but I mean, you've got forest, forest land, you've got state right-of-way and all this, I mean, it's such a unique situation.
Well, we need to clarify that in the regulations. It's one thing when it's on town right-of-ways, but how about if somebody, if, that's the only intersection that I'd be aware of that's DOT property, right?
That's correct.
Right. Uh, and, and then now, you gotta, now, they're right, and now, in that case, there's some confusion as to whose property it is.
But if you're trying to write ordinances based on this convoluted situation, you're gonna have a real mess.
No, I, I, I completely agree with you, and that's not the, the, the main concern is to get on directional signs that are, to get some clarity around, what are we going to allow on directional signs on towns right-of-way, I think it's one key issue. And then the other issue becomes, the on-premise regulations are fine, I think, with, with few exceptions.
On-premise meaning?
Meaning if it, I, I think the definition of on-premise is on the lot with the building it, where the business is. Now becomes the question of, suppose I wanna go and lease land from, let's say Windsor Hill. What is that? Is that on-premise or off-premise? I have no clue. I, I, and I think that's what the ZBA struggled with, I mean, you know, you don't have any definitions in many of this stuff, so we need to, and that's, that'd be a case of, suppose somebody wanted to put a directional sign up, not on their own property, this would be a business, not on their own property, and they get an agreement from some other to lease their land. Can, do we, do we say, do we prohibit that? And I'm just saying, we're gonna have to decide these things as a planning board, I don't, I don't have any. Or is that okay?
Dealing with that, this specific sign, the.
Yeah.
The one that's got all the crazy names that don't exist anymore. I don't, I don't understand the location of that, I mean, that's a lousy location, if you think about it. Cars are still moving, going by there. The, the location should have been, when you come to the stop sign.
Yeah, straight in front of you.
You're looking at it, so you can have five or ten seconds.
There's already a sign there.
Yeah, but there's already a sign there.
There was already a sign there that does exactly what they wanted, their shots, ice skating, turn left. But if, if it's deemed to be that it's part of their general, is, on-premise, they don't own any property, the mountain. So, so everything they have is, is a use permit from the Forest Service. I'm assuming that the Forest Service, maybe they told them your u, maybe, maybe the reason they turned it down is that it's your use permit, doesn't extend that far. That, that could be the only reason I could think of why they turned it down. There are obviously some, but I don't know the reason, I have no idea.
They certainly haven't kept it up, so, you know.
Right.
You've got permission at some point in time, let's not just look lousy for years and years.
But I'm pretty sure they got permission from DOT, uh, in the past. It is a change, from the town's perspective, it's a change in, uh, the decision by the, by the Forest Service, that that's their property, not DOT's right-of-way.
That's interesting, 'cause I didn't, I mean, I wasn't part of the nuts and bolts of it, but just as emergent, we had always been told it was the Forest Service and that they'd gotten permission from it, back when it was first, but it's, you know, it's weird.
But we did.
It's weird.
They might have, there was a different ranger at that time. So the current ranger says, no.
Different sheriff from town?
He's new sheriff from town. The answer is no, so they're gonna have to remove it right now.
But what, what you're saying is that the, it's not so much you're looking for an answer from the board to do that sign, you're just saying that the selectmen really don't have the tools they need to work with to be able to do that, so we have to somehow establish a sign.
It's, I'm, I'm supporting what the dilemma the ZBA got into, and I think that's what we need to focus on, they're saying, so many of these terms are undefined, you gave us no choice, but to say, you know, it could be construed that the intersection of Village Way and, uh, you know, the main road is a major intersection.
So you're looking for somebody to put together a sign ordinance, better for review and improve the sign ordinance that we have, and is that done by the planning board, is that?
Well, I, I think Wendy and I have kind of volunteered, and I, I can't get a draft by the next meeting, but the one after that, I, between the two of us, I think we'll try to come up with a draft, what it might look like.
But probably, I think it would be good, and I think this was brought up last time, to wait, uh, before we consolidate anything with regard to that pedestrian village report, 'cause I think that it's gonna have quite a bit to do with sign.
Right, one of the big questions, I think, that, and I think the planning board is gonna have to wrestle with this, is we've, we've got all these signs that are sitting, directional signs sitting on town rights-of-way, it is unclear as to who owns any of these signs. I don't know who paid to build them, I don't know who pays to maintain them, and I'm gonna suggest that if a sign's on a town, you know, what I would suggest writing the regulations is all, all directional signs on town rights-of-way are owned by the town and maintained by the town, and, you know, you wanna get on those signs, here's the rules of how to get on those signs, but it's town property. And then we get, you know, we get, and, and that you can't have a private sign on town rights-of-way, I think it's one way to do this, but, uh, so the, you know, so if somebody wants to do what Roper Real Estate did, they're not gonna be allowed to do it. They're not gonna be able to put up their own independent business sign on a town right-of-way. No, we're not gonna make them take this, you know, once they move it, we won't make them take it down again.
That'll help create a standard of appearance-wise as well.
I think so.
It only makes sense.
Even though we have to take the financial responsibility on, I mean, but there's a lot of them, I, I, I mean, it's, you know, and somebody gets into ownership, but, but at least if you're on business signs, town rights-of-way, I think the town, my opinion is, is the town ought to own all those signs and maintain them.
So is there now a committee of two?
Yes, right.
Two would do this.
And I'll, I'll commit to try to, within two months, to come back with some things for the board to ponder, and then hopefully we'll write a set of regulations.
How would that apply to us existing? That would ju, that would just become the town signs?
Well, I, 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 in the absence of anybody, I don't think anybody would object if we, if we took over ownership of all the signs, with the possible exception of Roper Real Estate. But, um, all the other signs around?
No, 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 I, I'm not just.
No, yeah, but Bill, only a few of those signs are in the town rights-of-way.
Well, the ones, only in the right-of-way, if it's on the right-of-way, then we all own.
I, I think there's only three or four that this is gonna apply to, of our current signs.
Would, if this passed, would, would we then bite, and I don't, I don't know as strong as they are, what they look like, but would we bite the bullet then to make all the signs, um, uh, uniformed?
You, you gotta help me, is, I mean.
Well, I mean, if that, are they all gonna be painted one, one, one pleasing, whatever?
Well, the ones in the right-of-ways would be.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, well, the town would, could do what it wants, I don't think we'd make them different.
Yeah, some of them are very new, like this from the past few years.
Yeah, well, actually, most of the right-of-way signs are pretty consistent, right now.
Well, it was just, it's just a question of, are we gonna have, if we end up with five or six, are they all gonna be different, or are they all gonna kind of be the same?
Uh, I'd turn it back to you, what would you want?
I think, given what Mark Kean had been just pointing out, that branding is an issue and giving them a huge.
I think there'd be, there should be a standard or, or whatever, I saw, but.
Well, we'll see what the report suggests, I mean, if it, hopefully they'll prioritize for us what's, what's most important, and we can allocate our, our budgets, yeah.
Okay, so that, uh, we'll, in a couple months, have some sort of a report from the committee?
Right, and we'll see if we can wrestle with it then.
So this, this would have to go before meeting?
Town meeting.
It's a change to the zoning ordinance.
Right, and the, so, we have to get through this by January?
Yeah, you have to hold your public hearing in January.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to, uh, accepting the wetland study to the master plan. I have no idea how to do this.
You, it was noticed on the agenda, you should take public input, open a public hearing.
Do we open a public hearing then? Public hearing is open? We'll have anybody that wants to, uh, present any kind of a, a case with regard to acceptance of the, uh, wetland study into the master plan, we'll hear positive, negative, any questions? Discussion?
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, yeah. So now, it, I guess it's just a matter of voting to accept the wetlands, okay? Because what we were doing is getting through the public hearing process.
Correct.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to accept the wetland study to the master plan.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm back reading the minutes now. So here's what Ray suggested, that we insert a one page into the master plan, accepting the wetland study, this is a simple paragraph, accepting the study, which needs to reference the study name, study date, prepara, I think someone needs to draft a paragraph, and we need to vote on that paragraph. To just say we accept it, me, doesn't mean anything.
Well, you could say, I could amend my, my motion to say, to accept the wetland study as, as, um, as presented.
Study, right, so that the, that the planning board would accept the wetland study of, what was the date of the study? And, and prepared by the name of an organization.
Yeah, we've got, we, we'll get the plan and put those details in, you're right, Bill. And, and maybe as part of it, a condition is that a paragraph be physically inserted in the master plan that references.
To reference, the hardcover, the study.
The overall plan, which is this, so, you're not putting the whole document in the master.
I would think that you would, I, I think the motion on the floor right now is good, and I think, I think you vote first that you're going to do that, and then you would go through the process of getting the.
How you're gonna insert it is another question.
Okay, with Ming?
Yep.
Any further discussion?
It was January.
So it's January two thousand fourteen, Stony Ridge.
Okay, I think that probably, to make the motion accurate, that, Sharon, you could refer to the actual wetlands study. Waterville Valley Townwide Wetland Inventory and Functional Assessment, you can take this right off the coverage, I'm reading it right now. SRE number thirteen dash zero zero one, date of January, uh, two thousand and fourteen. And the motion would be that, um, we are going to, um, make this a part of the, uh, master plan.
Incorporate it into the master plan.
I, what was the?
What, do you wanna make it a chapter?
Accept the wetland study to.
That the wetland study became a chapter in the master plan?
No, I don't think he's saying that, are you?
If you make it a chapter, you can, you don't have to physically put it in, I hope.
No, you don't have, you don't have to put the whole plan in, but it would be its own chapter unless you want it to be part of the land use chapter. Because it has to be someplace in the.
Right.
Master plan, so that when we make copies, people can see it, so either make it its own chapter, or make it incorporated at the end of the land use chapter.
There's so much, there's so much in that, it probably deserves its own.
Well, it might, but, you know, can't even discuss that until we decide whether or not we're gonna accept it as part of the master plan. Which is the motion on the floor. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's passed, so now it's a matter of.
Excuse me?
Who was second?
Uh.
Bob.
Yeah. Okay, um.
This is a seven-page introduction, which summarizes the report.
Okay.
It's kind of like an executive summary, that's at the front of the, of the.
Okay, so the question is, how do we accept this into the master plan at this particular point, do we do it by reference, or do we set up a chapter for it, or do we just include this introduction portion of it, Mark, you're saying, set up a chapter and make this introduction the chapter?
Make that, make that the chapter, that references the plan, it references the map that they prepared.
And you can reference the plan for the detail.
I know, I hate to set up a chapter in the master plan that probably not any of us have read.
Well, I've read the summary.
Have you read this, uh, wetlands assessment report?
Uh, I, I think I read the summary. The whole thing, no.
No, 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 just this first seven pages.
Well, then, should we send the summary out and vote on it next time? I don't think this is critical.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, uh, I don't think, I mean, we decided we're going to accept it into the master plan, but I think it's a little.
I mean, it could fit in the land use, we can talk about different regulations and future use recommendations, and maybe if we all read that, and then see if it would fit in here, as, as opposed to its own chapter.
Yeah, I, I would think if we had a little time to read it and then discuss it.
Well, if there's already a paragraph in there for site plan review, or whatever it is, that is those, are those the type of land use regulations that are referenced?
Is that the master plan?
Yeah, yeah.
If, if you do it that way, Wendy, would that throw, I mean, I realize it's just computer, but would that throw the rest of the plan off?
Nope. We could put a paragraph, just a paragraph with the things that Bill just talked about, who did it, what was the year of it, all of that, you could put that in as a paragraph, or you can have your own chapter that would be the introduction, seven pages. But you don't have to decide that now.
Right, except that there's other existing regulations, and we list, I don't know, over a dozen different ordinances.
Right.
And I don't see wetlands even listed in here, which might have been an oversight in the first place.
Well, no, we didn't have anything.
We didn't have anything ever, people could.
Is shoreline protection in there?
Uh, green belt was in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There should be a reference to shoreline protection, flood zone.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's Ray's step two here, which is, if, if we intend to actually make this do something, it's not a question of accepting the study, it's a question of someone's got, and this is a lot of work, someone's gotta go to the zoning maps and create a zoning overlay district that says, here, here are these delineated, and I'm sure she's got a map in there, here are the wetlands, but then you gotta go and say, in these areas, here are the restrictions in terms of building, not building, what you can do, what you can't do, um, or otherwise, nothing will happen.
That's, that's a zoning ordinance change.
Right, right, and someone's gotta write that zoning ordinance change, or nothing happens.
That's right, we, we have, we do have the overlay, it already exists, and we can put it on our tax map, okay? But it doesn't tell us anything other than the fact that we think there's a wetlands in it, you guys need to decide what does that mean.
Right, do we prohibit or restrict development in those areas is the question, and if so, what?
And, and it's really not a part of our zoning map yet, because we haven't voted at town. And and it's really not a part of our zoning map yet, because we haven't voted at town meeting whether or not to incorporate it. So you need to decide, are you gonna put that up for the vote, or just leave it as informational? Because right now, it's just information.
Why does it have to be actually a part of the zoning map itself rather than just an overlay?
We can make it an overlay, but let's suppose let's suppose we adopt it as an overlay.
Yeah.
What are the development restrictions within it?
And in order to have those development restrictions, that's a vote of town meeting, that's not your decision.
I mean, or we could just say the state, I mean, the state defines what you can and can't do, to some extent?
To very only if it's prime.
Prime.
There's only the only statutory requirements are for prime wetlands.
And did we have any prime in her overlay?
No, well, you get to define prime.
Oh, that was the next thing, yeah, we've gotta decide what's prime.
And we and we kinda took a halt, didn't we not, that we did not want prime?
There the last time you talked about it, you decided, yes, as a sense of
It's advantageous to us not to have it as prime.
Right.
You're right, but but I don't it still begs the question, do you intend, do we as intend as a town to to create some restrictions in these areas?
Oh, no, I agree with I agree with that.
Forget about it, do whatever you want.
But the wetlands, they can't build within the wetlands right now, no one can build within the identified wetlands. Right. They can build right up to it, though. Some towns have setbacks from wetlands boundaries. Others, just by state law, they can build right up to the wetlands. So those are the kinds of questions that we would have to answer.
That sounds like a lot of work.
I thought you paid a lot of money to have it mapped, so. And we we can't put it on the we can't put it on the tax maps unless the town adopts it. We can have it there for information on our G I S system, but that's that's all we can do.
Wasn't the Conservation Commission supposed to prepare some language?
The Conservation Commission has been working on this, but I you guys can work with them, you don't have to do it all yourself. Yes, they were supposed to start working on language too, to propose to you. It's a lot of work.
So I think that I think that may maybe it's not as complicated, and and the areas they identified is a question. Do we wanna make it a hard and a hard and fast rule that you can't build in those areas, all of them? Or or are some of them so small that they're not worth?
You also get into mitigation and stuff like that.
Well, then you're allowed to mitigate, right?
Should we not have the overlay on the tax map so that we can see the impact of what we're deciding?
Yeah, yeah, if we get like a blown up version, so we can really see it easily, that would make sense.
In in that, didn't they 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 didn't have a single map that just covers the town, that shows you all the wetlands?
I think They they have a map, it was a little hard to read, but they did have a map. It was on a small scale to begin with, that was that we were looking at, but it just was a little busy, and I think that Harry was talking about they were gonna simplify it a little bit. So that the wet areas showed up a little bit better with regard to the zoning lines and so forth, but but I don't think
Well, we we she basically took an aerial photo and superimposed her map on the aerial photo. You don't have anything where you can see the individual properties, or the zoning districts, the current zoning districts with the with the wetlands overlay.
Yeah, you couldn't relate it to
And that's really, I think, what the information that you guys are talking about.
Yeah.
You could get that map there, grayscale, with a color overlay over it.
But I think the Conservation Commission was gonna do that, they're thinking to get those maps.
They haven't talked to me about it.
Can we meet with them before we, I mean, it seems like they're the ones really entrenched in all the details. It makes sense if we met with them before we acted, I would think.
Well, at this point, we've decided that we are going to somehow accept it into the master plan, so I don't know if there's any schedule or something that we had to meet with or do that, but okay. It sounds to me like there's gonna be an awful lot of thought that has to go into this. It's gonna affect a lot of land, I think.
Right, and and because in the absence of that, if we don't do that step, then it's up to each developer to go and define what the wetlands are.
Which is what they've been doing now.
Which would we have been doing now, and if we don't take that step of creating the overlay and saying, these are our wetlands, then you're right back to the developer doesn't have to accept those as wetlands, he can go do his own study.
Why would we as a town go through what we did and pay for it if we're not gonna do?
Only if we felt for some reason it wasn't right.
Well, I would suggest that perhaps the place to start is with the state's regulations and so forth, and then pare it down. I mean, if we don't wanna accept them a hundred percent, I mean, it's gonna have to be up, there's a lot of manpower and a lot of man hours have gone into developing those ordinances. And I I don't think we should start from scratch without really knowing anything about how to do it.
I think it would be to, I think the step is to create the overlay, I think as Ray pointed out, i- i- that we need to say, these are our wetlands. And then you builder, you look at this map, these are the wetlands, you don't have to do your own wetland study. You know, here's what we say they are, and live with it, and 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 you're right. Then he's gotta live with the state regulations first, and then if we impose any other regulations on top of that. But if we don't officially endorse and create that map, I think they can just go do what they want. They can go create their own wetlands map.
So what is
So I mean, we already heard from Campbell, and he didn't believe that many of these were wetlands.
So what's the step to actually get something going to get that map?
Um, I need to contact our mapper and give them the overlay from Stony Ridge, and ask them to produce that map with Stony Ridge's overlay on it.
Now, do we have to have a motion and a vote to have you do that, or can we, I I it's the next step, obviously.
I believe it, it's a critical next step.
So, no, you have money remaining in the planning board budget, and the Conservation Commission has money remaining in their project budget. So whatever that cost is, will take out of one of those two lines or a combination.
I would just wanna make sure there's no duplication, it seems to me, because I've seen remember the Conservation Commission
Well, I'll talk to David, and I'll make sure that they haven't already started that, but nobody's talked to me, and I don't I don't think they know who our mapper is, so.
All right, so one way or another.
I'll work with the Conservation Commission to get that map produced.
Okay, thank you.
I'll ask them to do it for the next meeting. You can start to look at it, and then we can go from there.
When we go through this process, or these processes of changing maps, or having the mapper, whatever company, whatever do this, is it is it possible that there can be electronic version that like the planet?
There will be.
And I'd like to say something on my computer, so that if I'm if I wanna ponder an issue, I I have the availability at my house to be able to look at it and get my head into something.
We will produce a P D F of that map with the wetlands overlay on it.
That'd be great.
And and then we'll have several hard copies for you to look at.
All right, then, I guess that that's the next step of this process, and we'll table that for the rest of this now for now. Move on to communications. And now committed reports, an update on the pedestrian village study.
Yeah, the second survey has just been completed. The link should be going out, I hope Mark got it to Tom yesterday.
I think he did.
Okay. And we'll follow the same distribution channels as we did last time. It's a it's a shorter survey.
Is there a blurb that's going out with that?
Yeah, yeah, it's a similar setup to last time, and yeah, it explains. Oh, or do you mean in the email?
In the email, there should be like a blurb.
I'll double check it out.
You know, so that people don't just delete it, you know, this is a second survey, follow on survey, or however we wanna.
I don't know if we're seeing one, but I'll make sure there is. Cover letter, cover email, whatever. And we had our community picnic, which, you know, seemed pretty well attended, sixty, seventy people all together. We packed right into the rec, um, multi-breakfast room. And, you know, aside from a certain a bed piece, I I think it was pretty positively received by the community. Um, I don't know if anyone else had a chance to attend and had any feedback on the evening?
Yeah, I I thought the evening went very well, there's one aspect that I I find that, I'm not sure they're not willing to address it, but I'd like to make sure they know that we would like to get an answer. They keep talking about shared parking in town square, which I believe is, you know, that we ought to treat that as, how much do we need in the center of town to support the center of town? I'd like to I'd like to come up with a number, how much? You know, what 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 is, you know, we know how much we have.
But don't you think
But I have no idea what would be a reasonable amount.
Don't you think that based upon the land that is still there and owned by the Waterville Company and their proposal with Tom Cochrane to to do these hotels and whatnot? Some of these hotels, Wendy and I had talked about it briefly, is that if we did an underground garage, and you know, and and I don't think it should be totally the burden of the town to take upon ourselves to do that, that that money should be, and then it would have to be based on the number of of beds and everything else, you know, that
The the parking requirements of today, or what we envision in the short term future, is not necessarily gonna remain that way as with any committee, I guess.
I'm 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 interested in getting an answer, forget about the future, you understand what's here today. What's the parking requirement for what's here today? And then it would be great if they could say, and here are some standards that you could apply for future development of the town here in terms of how much more needs to be added.
Right.
But I I don't think we have any idea, right now, we have a standard that says, and there is a defined standard. We said for each bed, you need half a space and da da da, is do they think that's adequate? Is that right?
Yeah, I think that it's supposed to all be part of their overall
And that's the only thing I I don't find them yet.
No.
And I'd like to see, I think it's important that we try to get an answer to that question.
Yeah.
Because I have no idea.
Yeah, I started asking Mark Kane just for a bit more detail and on stuff for us to work on for potential zoning changes.
Right, exactly.
We need to long
We're crunch.
Yeah.
I mean, and the other thing I look at, Bill, is that, you know, with the hockey, the Wolves being in town and utilizing, you know, those condos, and a lot of those kids have cars. So how do you, you know?
It's been a more permanent use of parking than we've had in the past. If you look at the town square ice arena parking lot now, what it was last September, what it is now, compared to our normal September, October, November timeframe.
It's past.
It is a lot of cars in there on a regular basis.
Well, I think the other side of that, too, it's not well managed, because there aren't specific spaces for every car, and people park helter skelter.
Well, yeah, it's not lined well.
Right.
It's not maintained in the snow well, and they go on trips, and they leave cars and cars
Exactly.
Get moved for winter maintenance.
Yeah.
You know, perhaps you wanna write something where they have to take those cars to the to a lot, like Lot Nine or something up at the mountain, when they go on trips, because they're using up a lot of parking for our transient guests.
But that that would that would get, I mean, if I was leaving, if I were one of them, I wouldn't want my car out in a parking lot.
No, I'm just I'm just making a suggestion, but but maybe there are there is remote parking that we can move them into, because for our, and it's a town issue, because the trash truck can't get in there.
Yeah, yeah.
We have we have fire and ambulance safety issues, because they can't maintain the parking lot the way they have in the past.
Has the town spoken to John?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't said anything, because right now, there are no regulations, they're not doing anything wrong.
No, they're not, it's not their parking lot.
Well, unless if they're blocking the trash and all, I mean, there are like
Well, but that's a an issue that we've had ongoing with town square, and we work with town square maintenance people about that, not specifically the Wolves, because the Wolves have a lease or whatever their arrangement is with town square. It's not the Wolves' issue, it's town square's issue.
Let me tell you, there are issues coming out from town square, doesn't feel as if some of the Wolves' issues are the town square's issues. And I've heard that from a couple of different people.
Well, whose issues are they?
Who knows, the Wolves, and the Wolves don't think that for the money that they're paying there to lease those prices for the season that that they shouldn't be getting the services at the beginning.
Oh, that's a, you mean in terms of leasing housing?
Well, I mean, they pay a they pay a flat fee, I don't know how it's arranged, but they pay a nominal fee to use those rooms there, and there are services that
The rooms in the ice arena?
No, 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 the housing.
That's where they're staying.
Oh, yeah, that's between them and town square.
Yeah, but town square doesn't think it's part of their that it's their issue.
Well, if if somebody, if if the town square rents a condo to a family, and they have one or two vehicles, it's not the town square's problem as to, or or where the people par- park, aren't there supposed to be still?
But that goes back to Bill's question, we've got all this shared parking.
Quote, shared parking, we need some specificity.
All right.
I I I it's a great, it's a it's it's the right thing to do, you know, but we to make it beyond, to act on it, you need something that's specific.
Well, and along those similar lines, I was thinking like with the whole parking issue in the North End, I mean, we're looking at within five years, I think, there being a real crunch there. B B T S continues on their road, which we all wanna encourage, but you have the lifts and the tennis that now are suddenly not having parking available to them, what do we do?
Well, I have no idea what the tennis courts does, because it has no parking space.
It has no parking space, but B B T S, B B T S is, I think in the Pinnacle program this year, they're up to like close to thirty.
Sure, or fifty is what I heard.
Oh, fifty?
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's, but anyway, as 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 they have as as they build dorms out and 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 grow, they're gonna wanna secure their campus space.
Absolutely.
For themselves.
They're gonna be required to, because they are a state certified school. So there there are already, if they're continuing down that path, those issues exist right now. There can't be any public parking where it has been, there can't be public use of bathrooms that there has been. I mean, there's a lot of security requirements that the state has if they're gonna be a state certified school.
But I think it sort of falls on the planning board to a certain extent to help facilitate with the different venues that we, I mean, of course, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, when everyone's doing their own thing there, we shouldn't have said, well, everyone needs their own parking, and let's pave all this, and because that would have been silly twenty years ago. But now is a time point where we're looking at needing to figure this out, and I kinda think it's on us to bring this over to the table.
And what happens with shared parking, if you're looking at private property, I mean, somebody could probably say, well, I don't wanna share my parking spot.
Well, we can work on, I mean, that's what, but if we don't have some rules to think about first, in terms of how much we have, it's hard to think about the mechanisms to get people to behave that way, because I don't know what to tell them to do. But I think to tackle the parking problem, we need some idea of, we think this is the right number here. And then you can wrestle with, okay, what's the best way to do that?
Right, yeah.
You know?
But do you do that as a temporary
But do you do that as a temporary measure until the, the footprint of the floor of the ma-, of the town is built out?
Sure, at a hotel, you just gotta change, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can take it into account in the beginning, but, but I, I, but if we can get the rules, then, then it's, I think it's possible to work on it, but. And, and yeah, you're, yeah, the North End is a lot, like, and there's gonna be a point where it'll be an interesting fight, because they've got a
Yeah.
the tennis is gonna argue they have a use by right that goes back for fifty years up there. They've forever parked in those lots, and, and it's gonna be an interesting thing to see whether you, you tell them, whoop, can't park there now.
And Snow's Mountain too, I mean, that's a big benefit in the summer.
Well, usually all owned by the same, see, that's what we forget, the golf courts, the tennis courts, Snow's Mountain, we're all owned by the same company, they, you know.
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But the tennis courts in particular, I don't know where they're gonna put people.
Bicycles.
Shuttle.
Well, there's a crisis coming with the bathrooms, 'cause I think the.
Oh, right, I heard.
There's no, there's no moving on that, that's, that's.
It's a big.
I don't know what BBTS is. BBTS is that their bathroom's plugged up and.
And BBTS wants to just keep them open.
It's one of those.
Well, they could, I, I, they couldn't even get agreement to share a porta potty with the golf course.
But. Yeah.
But there, there is one, it's on the golf course.
Golf course.
Yeah, but.
So can the Snow's Mountain or the tennis people use it?
But, um.
Oh.
Dave and Chris are not allowed, even if, even if the BBTS says we wanna keep those open to the pub, the bathrooms open to the public,
Yeah.
we can't, as the town, we can't allow them to do that if they're gonna be a certified school.
School, okay.
Because they gotta follow those rules, so they have to figure out first what they wanna be, and then 'cause you got a, I think, a segment of BBTS that is really pushing becoming a certified school, and then you have other people that kind of wanna be the good neighbors and let's just keep doing things the way that we've done them all of these years, so that's gonna be a.
It's nice for them to share, but when you start getting thirty or forty students, it's like you've gotta, you've, you've gotta, uh.
But Bob, it's if they have two kids, it's not the number of kids, it's what their program is.
No, no, I, I. No, I understand that legally, but I'm just saying, even if there wasn't, they, they'd still have a responsibility to the parents and the students not to let outside influences come.
Yeah.
It brings, I, I mean, it, it brings a whole nother situation. And the other thing that I wanted to point is on a different thing, I did get some feedback from people, they like the idea very much of the notion of bike, you know, that maybe we can use the existing roads and somehow paint bike lanes and stuff on that. But then a lot of, and I, I don't know, a lot of people throw up to me, well, aren't there all kinds of regulations as to how wide that has to be, and Bob and I said, geez, I don't know. Um, I, I, I'm assuming that in suggesting this, they're checking to make sure what they're doing is, is legal.
Yeah. Right, of course.
Well, especially with.
Yeah, no, it's just assuming.
Especially with the size of our roads.
I.
You know, I mean, if you need two feet or three feet on each side, you're gonna mark it, you're gonna end up with a one-lane road.
Right.
Yeah, no kidding.
Well, we can go, I, we should talk about it, maybe we need to go one way.
But.
We've run into that before, I'm still, some of these places, we have one-lane bridges.
One thing though, is I was hoping for that study, and I still hope, but I haven't really decided yet, whether the study's gonna end up just with a bunch of questions, do you wanna do this, do you wanna do that, you wanna do this, or is it gonna come in with recommendations? This should be a thing, I wanna, I wanna make sure.
This is what we're pushing for.
Well, no, what, what was stated in their proposal was to have the recommendations and the wherewithal of how to get it done, and it's just a matter of
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where the value of the report is, I think, yeah.
Yeah, and then the, then the real work begins, really, because we have this, and then the implementation starts, and that's, I think, more daunting to me than just doing the study.
Yeah.
Just the survey. And the study, yeah.
And the studies.
Yeah.
It's only money.
It's gonna, it's gonna do a lot of work with zoning.
Anything is right.
Says money pays.
We, right.
Always comes down to that.
I mean, we can always, we, we could stripe anything, you had the money.
Well, and land.
Okay, any, any further update on the pedestrian village study?
Money and land.
I think that's it, the survey, the picnic, well, I think.
Do we have, uh, uh, I think we do, and I, I guess I just forgot about it, or don't, don't remember it, do we have a target date that we may get their recommendation study?
I think the initial report, they're trying to locate a rough draft, it was by October nineteenth, is that what you said, I think, now?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And, um, you know, again, it's a rough draft.
So would the report be ready for the November planning board meeting, do you think?
A rough draft of it, but I think the report wasn't supposed to be done until December, January, 'cause there's another public meeting in there somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, as far as a suspense, then we should have an agenda item to review the draft?
Yes.
Do you want the whole board to review the draft?
Can we get?
I think, yeah, I think it'd be, yeah.
Yeah, we do, okay. Well, we get it sent out, if, really, could we get it sent out or to the town?
For the November meeting, yeah.
Well, whenever we get it, whenever we get it, prior to that.
Well, of course, yeah. Yeah, of course, yeah, 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 because if it came later October, it'd be good for the November meeting.
I'm, I'm thinking about timing here, 'cause you're running into the end of the year, I, I think I would also tell them that if they saw, if they had a recommendation they think needs to be implemented immediately.
Exactly.
That needs to go into the front, because we're running real short on time to get anything into the next town meeting.
On time, yeah. Town meeting, yeah.
Now, I'm okay with taking the next year to figure out what the priorities would be, but if, if there was an item that had to be moved immediately, that
Yeah, right.
That would be good.
Needs to be identified.
Yeah, I would agree with that, too.
Okay, good.
Okay, privilege of the floor, we've already had that.
I had it too.
And I guess we're looking for a adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?